Okay, let's get the show on the road. Let's start with our roll call. Art and Emily, yes I am here.
Tyler Lane.
Here.
Laura Kelly.
Here.
Here. Gary Nelson.
Here.
Tony Smith.
Here.
Jamie Lara. And Barbara Tucker.
Here.
Jamie wasn't sitting in the chair.
Yes.
Was Jamie zooming in?
No, Jamie is not in the meeting.
Alright. Alright. Let's do a review of approval for meetings from June 14th to 2022 meeting. Does everyone have that opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Are we making motions to approve? Alright, Art makes the motion to approve. Do we have a second? Seconds? All those in favor, vote aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any opposed, vote nay. Post at location address. Alright, good business. We will discuss revisions to the transportation corridor planning survey from NSA professional services.
So, thank you, President Chair. These were made by NSA. I'll just turn this over to them if we can discuss what they've done here to assess. If I have a planning zone commission, we actually have something more comprehensive. We had a lot of good questions in there. We want to make sure we have questions in there that specifically address the corridor. Yeah, I just go ahead. I got a couple things to talk about the corridor. There's some... We've approached by a couple of property owners. I don't know why I did a few things on... I'm sure you've committed some... I want to make sure that they're... It's going to require some testing, but I've been understanding what it's going on. So, I'll just touch base real quick on this one. Awesome. 249235th Street. This property is Zone 8-2. And it's just east of Colville.
249235th.
Yeah. It's a old farmstead. They're stone section on this property. Yeah, all of this is air floor. They want to utilize the barn on this property to be used such as weddings and maybe wedding receptions, graduation gardens, so forth like that. So, and we had requests like this up on 120th, along the Des Moines River, north of Fort Dodge, by somebody. And this is part of your position, we have paid parking and stuff like that. They want to do something very similar. And in pursuit of this one here, I think we're actually modeling it right now. We're working with a training and talent to draft a proposed text. This is... I would come forward with this. This should be the district. Something's probably going to come forward. And this is a text that you guys can actually make a recommendation.
Can you pull current zoning on that, Alison?
I don't have... I don't have our map right here.
It might be a little bit of a left. Zone 8, a left, I'll probably try to explain that there. That may or may not come up. It's kind of hard to break the colors on this sometimes. The green's 8-2. The yellow's 8-1. Yeah. And then the red is from a small... Yeah. And I just want to make that attention. So, of course, so... With that, I think we go ahead and turn it over to NSA. Do you have any questions? Can you talk about how process moved and so forth? Yes, sir. For those of you at home, follow along as best you can. But if you have questions, you know, just let us know.
What, Laura, have the fact?
Oh, okay. I was... I wasn't sure. Yeah, yeah. The patents were digital or not? I thought, oh, I'll just... They were digital when the...
So, basically, it's saying that you have the fact.
Is it both possible? Or just 1-7? The 1-7?
Are you still talking about the... What was...
Yeah.
It's the one with the house on it, not the main one. It's 1-7. And we're...
Okay, I couldn't tell since they're both outlined. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to... Should we start on the survey and then...
No, I'm going to just... Yeah, go through your PowerPoint and we'll get to the survey. What do you guys have on the agenda after this? That's... That was what it looked like last... It's improved. So, let's go. So, actually, former... Getting back to the last discussion about the one who's been with the bar. That would recommend issue to condition on each term. And make sure we were conditioned on that to make sure that because if they're going to have these... Make sure everything's integrated with control. Those are dollars. On my side, so... So...
Very close proximity to the...
To some of those, yeah. That one's got... And I said, you guys really have to work with those neighbors when that comes forward, so...
How close is the nearest neighbor?
Oh, that's pretty close. So, the... To the east. Just a few minutes.
Really?
They've already got one or two. We got a couple on board already. But again, this proposal will require, you know, a lot of direct activity to stage probably before sunset. That will have to be worked out. And then all broader doors.
Does it be... I just wonder because it's something very similar to like 1868 farmhouse. It's down located. It's just north of Boone. South and east of Pirate Loaf. It's wedding venue graduation and kind of the same thing. But it's an old farmhouse and they built up.
It's also on High Cross Trail or across the bridge, east of... Like it's rather... It was the deep looking building and they had a mountain area where you could get married and conventions. Yeah, a whole area.
Yeah.
Let's see.
It's down. It's all the same things. No.
What was that?
I know.
It's just kind of the same thing. It works with... Oh, okay. Okay. They're talking about me doing expansions to that. Because I was also nervous about it. And... Of course, when I first came here, it was a big expansion. You remember being able to find... Gosh.
I don't remember.
That was weird. So, I came here.
I just wanted to get our fingers.
Well, that's what it is.
It's coming in.
That's what I think is at the culture.
I think it's a plus. You know, it's... You have their... Because they are...
Yeah. Bands and stuff.
It's beautiful place. And there's one down by Stradford, too.
Yeah, there'd be more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's different. So, I think there's more and more of them popping out all over the place. That it's like, okay, there's places that we can refer to. Something like that.
Make sure it's this one.
Yeah. Because I know I was just at a wedding at 1868 farmhouse in June. And it's on a gravel. You know, we're sitting out there at the wedding, but all those people going, where's going? And you're like, okay. We're starting with that. And it's like everyone... More hours. But it's like, people used to live there. They don't live there anymore. They turned the whole house into a bridal.
It's nice to get married inside with the mother's nursery and married out there.
Well, and the bride party gets spent the night there. And it's totally wasted. Stay right there.
There's really possible, yeah, by... On some of those scale up, where they actually sort of have a small banquet. Maybe like a second small couple lots of worship banquet. And that's the most area to get ready. And they build it all up and it's just beautiful.
Yeah. There could be more and more. Everybody like that, that just keeps going on. Because it's so tiny.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's what a lot of that now, they're getting...
Now, recently.
But C and S.
We're just going to say it again.
Think so. Which one?
I think next one.
One.
And we did this all.
And of course, if you want any car.
Yeah.
That's the promise of every...
Yeah. So, it's like, yep. Lots of that going on now. There could be. It's like, only the thing that we got. Except for... Yeah. It's... I'm sorry. It's sound.
Should we be in there 1,000?
It's just, you know, it's more than just solar. So, you didn't say...
It's probably...
Can't go wrong.
Yeah. Now, you say that's what it is.
There should be a PDS on there.
So, okay. Well, there is a PBS there. 712. There. We'll open up. Oh, no.
Alright, who do you want to?
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
That's the... That's the stage right here.
I guess we will jump into this.
That's just...
It's super useful.
I know.
Like when I'm not looking in my cars, like, hey, you should probably be great. And I'm like, oh, thanks, Steph. Now, you should want to be here.
Yeah.
And then there's other types of... Like, right now, my video is like, oh, well, I'm installing an update. Soon enough, I'll turn that to work.
Yeah. Mine always goes like, well, we'll do it in your off working type hours. Yeah, when you know I'm not going to work. Maybe... That time's on you.
I love Google. Google Maps are my favorite thing. That's one thing I don't work that much. Directing. May well have... Yeah. And you agree? So, have everyone say then?
Couple bumps here at the end. Other than that, it's a good day. Meetings.
Kind of concerned about your...
Oh, yeah. It seems... It seems usually it's because there's someone in the backseat that's trying to get my attention. For someone who has a reason, like, look, a dog. No, unfortunately, they're strapped down. They can't get at you too easily.
Laura, can you see the slideshow or is it still on the Beacon page for you?
Nope, I can't see the slideshow here.
Alright, now you're ready to go. Sorry about that.
Okay, so we have a project update for you today. And then we'll do the survey. We'll look at the draft website pages. Say that one. And then we'll talk about our upcoming activities and our September meeting.
Sure. So, in schedule wise, obviously, we kicked off in May, have that first meeting, talked about what we'd be doing. Did an overview, talked about expectations, that type of thing. And so, in the meantime, in June, I was on vacation. Jeff and you were on vacation. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to be away or at least relax for a little while. Maybe not. I don't know. I mean, it looks like maybe not. So, if you have a busy June, I hope July is still or maybe just stay busy. It's one way to keep... Keep awake. Draft project website, there's going to go through draft meeting survey. Obviously, we put together that, added some things after you guys took a review at the June meeting that we're going to talk about tonight. And then Emily, one of our planners, and Sarah both went out and got some folks. Roamed around, so we have some great folks to use for the plan. Couple nice days, I think, in June, right? Yeah. So, we'll be looking at the survey website. And once we get those all bottled up, we'll open it to this model. We want to then promote that survey, whether it's where we... Wherever we need to get our copies, we can. And but mostly promote it online because we usually get better response when people go from an online click to nothing. If they get it in an email, they're more likely to just click the link and take it online. But we have other options if not. Or, as Sarah said, at the end of this, you know, or for sometime during this meeting, we want to talk about scheduling moving in for workshop for August. And that's our open house-ish, like just general come all, general community meeting that we would invite folks to where we go through the squad analysis with them. And talk, you know, basically bring the, here's the process we're going through. Here's the things we're going to be focusing on, transportation corridors, progress of plan for the whole city, followed up with zoning ordinance updates that help implement that plan and the transportation corridor stuff. And then also talk about stateholder and folks for right this, if it's a little later in the presentation. September, we would then complete the traffic profile. And so, we start on goals and strategies to then review those. Again, nothing's final till it's all approved, but we want to start drafting those to, you know, content that this next meeting to go through. Feedback from what we got in the survey, feedback from the community input workshop, as well as that county profile, which is sort of the existing conditions report, the kind of, this is now in Western County. And here's what, you know, the plan is using kind of this space, the, you know, that sort of thing. October, continue to draft that news component, the transportation corridors plan. And then kind of start at that point a little bit on development scenarios and zoning ordinance amendments that, you know, we'll know by that timeline. Okay. If we're going to implement this along these corridors or rural areas, here's some changes to the zoning ordinance that we're going to expect to help implement that. And then follow that up through the next three months. It is a tentative schedule. It may, you know, go a little longer than what we anticipate here. But that is kind of the nature of things. And Jeff and I had to talk about that a little bit. So, if we, if we do, you know, hesitate here and there, it's more input, that sort of thing. It's all good. Yep.
I have a question. At that point, when all this information that we put together, we're spending a year putting together and we're not going to do a recognition to support supervisors until January next year. Are... Jeff, do you know, are you going to be, as we're going through these processes, any information you share with all the supervisors? I hate to wait a whole year if they've got some big ideas or some big, you know...
As we get more and more, you know, we're very preliminary right now. Get more and more and start collecting stuff. And I start... We start tuning them in.
The reason I ask that is that with the surveys going out, people aren't maybe necessarily going to come to us with questions or to go to the supervisor with questions.
Yep.
And trying to make sure that supervisors are on board with what's going on.
No, no, they'll be at work. Yeah.
I want to look at the stateholder and some of those discussions as well.
Yeah, they're definitely the folks, like those would maybe be people like among other county staff that want to contact the stateholders, which is supposed 30 minute, sign up for a time and let's talk about whatever. Like, we have, we have canned questions of like, hey, here's some general questions about transportation corridor planning, zoning updates, not planning. But inevitably, they, people talk about where, you know, what is on the top of their mind. I'm doing stuff for Fairmount, Minnesota, right now. They're doing zoning ordinance update. And they have a couple of like poor cases that are going through and some big campground they turned down. So, while I have all these ideas about what I, you know, the general things, they're definitely talking within the realm of like, what is, what's going on now and what they're dealing with. So, we do a lot of robbing, I guess, in those, in those state parks to see, to try and get to like, okay, so what do you do? What do you do experiences in the past, you know, in terms of like, is this issue that is lingering? Is it an issue that's new? And just kind of pick the breaks. But they're, they're, they're good opportunity. The other great thing that I encourage, the project updates that we put out every month, those would be probably excellent to share with the county board, just that, yeah. Usually it has like what we're doing, what we did, what we're doing, what we will be doing. And then we'll link to the project website. Good tool for a supervisor, especially if they're not like, well, I haven't... They would probably never want to say, well, I haven't been following that process. Right? That's the last thing that we want to happen. But they could say, oh, yeah, go to this website. It's got all the stuff on there. I didn't go to the last meeting or something, you know, whatever. But they can steer people that website we write today and have, have the answers they need to look like supervisors.
I just with emails and things like that, with the surveys going out, people have questions, like, so it may not come to us, then they go directly to the supervisor. I was more...
And ultimately, we want them to have an answer where it shows, you know, like, head quote the project website. The more information. Or contact the consultant, you know, Chris and Sarah's contacted, put us up with website and go that route, too. So... I do all that.
Okay. Any other questions about our project schedule? Okay. So, if you want to survey. Okay, so all scroll through and you should see what it's going to look like on the digital version, the version. And then we also have the hard copies in front of us. So, we'll just walk through and look at each question and if you want to change it or if you have any ideas, just let us know. But does anyone have any ideas, like from the beginning? Or is there a thing that you wanted to see in the survey that isn't in there or a thing that you broke this department?
I guess the thing I'll add, I'll might, Sarah, what we heard from your June meeting was there needed to be more questions regarding the transportation corridors and what people thought about that. So, those have been added as a separate section. If you look on page two. We kind of put it in the middle of some of them after the day. But basically, drafted some specific questions about transportation. Now, again, these, these were our, these were our shot at, okay, let's address these. Whatever you guys want to change on these, if we want to add questions, all that's fine. If you don't like questions, that's great, too. So, let's go through it. So, we put in this follow up question there specifically to transportation board finding Western County targeted areas for planning include the major arc of those unincorporated areas of the county specifically those adjacent to transportation corridors, US Highway 20, US Highway 169, 507, and category P of the night. And then it asks, how do you currently rate the safety of those primary transportation corridors? So, then we call these lighter, I think they're called lighter scale, right? So, it basically, you know, like, you can fill in whatever you want. So, in this case, we go very safe, you know, very unsafe. Second question, how do you currently rate the accessibility of Western County's primary quarters? Same thing. How would you currently rate the aesthetics of the quarter? How important to you is improving safety of travelers and getting into special quarters? How important is you to improve the aesthetics along with development along these major quarters? How important is improving accessibility along the quarters? Those are all probably, you know, when we would get this out, we'll start to get real general people and probably feel very safe and find it important and that kind of thing, or whatever else. And then we just ask that open ended question of what else would you like to have considered in Western County transportation? If you want to see minimal. And then we sort of do these leading things to kind of get people to remember, you know, get their brains start jogging with about what types of things. The counties specifically in terms of planning and zoning ordinances and that type of thing, you know, infrastructure would be responsible for taking care of. Do you see minimum design standards on major transportation borders? Do you want to have native findings? Are there types of businesses you give or do not want adjacent highways? So, to hopefully to people that answered those questions, but we'll hear what's...
That, that particular one just is one I applied that kind of like almost seem to be a separate question.
Okay.
Are there types of businesses you do or do not want?
Okay.
Just because that's what I feel like what we're focusing on is trying to get people to tell us, what do you want to see? Yeah. You know, what, what do you guys want to have that's important? To have that lumped in together, I guess, maybe that could be a standalone question.
Yep. Same little open, open ended. That was everything we wanted.
To have that little extra emphasis on, like, say, you know, please tell us what we need to see.
Okay. That is easily done. So, the survey is just one avenue or technique to get in for the stateholder meetings, everything else to give... Right. Thank you. Yeah, so we, you know, some folks may be like, I don't know, sorry. But we'll come to a conclusion, which is why we're adding that. Right, thank you, um yeah, so we, you know, some folks may be like, I don't know, sorry, if I come to a meeting, which is why we're having that community meeting, we're looking at our own odds. Or uh they may say, well, I don't want to say my, all the stuff that I have to say, I don't want to say from the big crowd, white and out paper. Those were the, those are the folks that we want to talk to, that's part of the stakeholders that, you know, we're not gonna say, I'll use Kevin as an example, you know. Kevin said this and this and this, what we will put into the plan and build into the goals, yes, we heard this from the stakeholder group, you know. Do the kind of the process, uh whatever they say, um so yeah, we have a survey to reach out to some folks, meetings to reach out to some folks. Uh stakeholder interviews to reach out to individuals or small groups if if they want to sign on, we just, we do it with a county thing. It's a kind of online scheduling thing in teams, and basically they pick a time that's open on Sarah Carter's schedule or, you know, whatever. Three weeks, four weeks, we're putting in there, um and it sends them a appointment with a video link and they just join. And so they work, they work really well, they can call in too, so if they don't want to, if you really just want to call, we'll call them as well. Um so yeah, those are the way, and then I would always encourage if you, if you, if somebody says, do you know, you want to order it or if you, if they want to talk. And, you know, it's before the stakeholder things or after, um just send them on right, like no, no issues whatsoever. Talking to anybody about, you know, their thoughts, I, like I said, we won't, we won't specifically, but we won't make sure that they get their importance. Uh I mean, that this first part of the plan where we're just gathering a lot of thoughts on things.
I'm just gonna hope that that, I mean, that this this part of it, we're doing this online and everything, I think is great. I just hope that we're not steering off someone who will population, and I'm hoping with our meetings, I'm hoping we're gonna be able to get them in. And get their questions answered, and their ideas too, because um they're in that line, and you're a father, you never answer. So, so we have the thing that uh get to catch those folks too.
Yeah, yeah, so we we rarely do just, I mean, they're very COVID, we did some stuff just online, but um. It pretty quickly turned back to, we need to do impersonations and online, kind of that, learning the game and sort of things. Cause you have people, you all have ninety five year old, you know, folks that have good opinions and a lot of history to provide to a process. Uh but you also have somebody that's running around the three or four practices a night with different kids and at the end of the night, they want to provide this payment. But it's gonna be sitting down taking sort of that, so.
I can like distribute this to uh like senior centers or different places too.
We, and we talked about city, the city hall, the city clerk's offices in towns too, the rural cities. Yeah, and then. Oh, sorry, no, no. You go on.
No, no, I'm not finished discussing.
We, the moving ones, I think we had separate too, but we, if we'll take some online promotion and we'll basically create a flyer. My idea is to send to uh the uh city clerk's office around the county with just a flyer basically and then, you know. Tens or eights, whatever, and if they run out, that's when we'll send them away. So that's online promotion and it's kind of a flyer to hopefully catch people's attention.
And maybe like the city clerks and I'm just. Asked experiences with some city clerks that if they have a senior center, make sure that they get these to like. The seniors or if they have like a senior meal, like seniors.
Yeah.
Eldridge type deals, that that's where it's important that they can get them to those people. Or into the libraries.
If you have anywhere specific, so I've got city clerks, senior centers, and libraries written on, if there's anywhere else that you think of, just let me know and then I'll make sure to get it up.
Okay. We talked, we talked about the last meeting, the time where I was at the point about. We look under the charts and I know the number should be kind of touched on that too. Let's find to try and get that to.
So the best way that I could think that we probably get people to take that. Is to work with some of the those employers, obviously we may not have the contacts for the small ones, bigger ones. I think definitely we could send, uh usually do a little bit of press release with the survey and talk about community media, kind of all of one sort of thing. In an email form, if we could work with you guys to send those to major employers that around the county or anybody based, you know, like. Shoot that out to anybody, um and build that one, it's probably the best, cause then they can choose to. It's it's probably a packaged email where we have the flyer, PDF copy of the survey and the links. And then you leave it up to the employer to send out, I think they want to put it on a lunchroom or something like that on a rolls board, great. If they want to email, you know, if it's more, if if it's more of a, it's not necessarily the best term, but. If it's less of a manufacturing or, you know, that type of workplace, or why not, we just send an email and show, you know, push out that back. We want to make sure that we could make it first, make that communication versatile, so the employer could just get it to their employees and facilitate that exchange without having to do a lot of like. But that would be, that would be my, well, has worked in the past. The other thing that's worked well is sending it to school districts, that same amount. And then if they choose to send it out to their email to to parents, I think maybe we had, we were just talking about Norwalk, we did it down in Norwalk. The minute the school district sent that out, then all those surveys went statistically through the roads, like it was like, well, now it's a, now it's a real survey. Now it's, you know, now it's like a census as opposed to, well, we got some really good feedback. Now, we can't guarantee anything, we always look for quality of the feedback and what people are providing, that over quantity. But if we get a bunch of them, that helps a lot with the trends, especially in the lighter things that we start to see. Now, we got really good response for this, so we know that, you know, this is fairly accurate for general.
That's good, that's good, yeah, cause I mean, nobody's gonna be happy with a hundred surveys back, but those hundred surveys could be really good. I wouldn't be disappointed, you know, assuming, I'm not, I'm not expecting that. But uh it's something of quantity and quality, that's the main thing.
The fact that we're focusing on this transportation, like you said, you know, competing for humble, let's just be, and I mean.
Those are all.
That's exactly what we're trying to talk about.
Those are all, that's all I'm ready, I think, you know, we reach out to half, half a dozen of major employers, school district and just provide that out there. And just get up to.
Small town gas stations, a lot of people will learn how to coffee, chit chat.
And those are the ones that are ideas.
The cases with roots.
Yeah.
We have two different areas.
Sarah, I drive a car, it's just some people that always drive by that same player. If I wasn't, if I was in, at nine o'clock at night, I was on my way home from meeting in Dakota City, I bet you that place is hot.
Early in the morning, but usually not so much late at night, no, but early in the morning hours and the gallery actually does two, sometimes three different coffee areas in our small hometown. And yeah, they say uh uh haircuts is where chit chat and gossip goes. Oh no, it's gossip.
Is it a gossip shop?
Yeah.
Well, that's facts.
Yes, it does, whether it's true or not, it's a whole different story.
Story changes for me to.
Exactly, it's the tell.
Some large syrup free coffee and uh just.
Elevators, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause the elevators are also when you get chairs.
Yeah, yeah, and they have license and certification, those guys are gonna have some good comments.
I would say those have, who owns most of the elevators around here? Okay.
Yeah, and and hopefully they'll be part of when you're targeting the larger players, that's why a lot of people are being targeted because they are, you know.
All of them, yeah, that's in its own context, I can, you know, we can send it to their media person or, you know, whoever and say like, hey, just. Send this out to the co-ops around Western County, or whatever they put from people that are using these roads and, you know, working in the rural areas and that kind of thing. I'll remind you, we'll see.
Yeah.
We'll send it, yeah, we'll send it out.
Yeah.
Do the school districts as well.
Cause like right now, I'm gonna tell you, there's some really not so happy people, because between the county and the state, you guys have shut down two main several there. Down in Gallery for bridge repair. And it's like, are you kidding me at the same time? It's like, oh my goodness, it's right where I might never been.
You gotta look at it from their perspective, they they did it to, they were like, hey, let's bid these two bridges at once, let's see if we can get a deal on a.
Yeah, one state and one county were like, can't, the state shut down first and then county were just in the last. Basically.
Well, hopefully the county will care more about any other, the harvest drought or not.
County was supposed to back open in two weeks, state not until probably the first of September and we went and looked at it last night, we were like. It's like exactly, work up harvest, oh boy, so yeah.
Those are the questions that we add on transportation, we left most of the rest ones in, again, we don't want to make it too long, cause people, you know. They can pass three or five minutes and they're gonna be out, so.
So you know, just pick this to get out there rather quickly and how much time do we do that?
I, we'll leave it open through whenever we have the community meeting, cause we'll also tell people, you know, like, hey, take this survey. There's not a real reason to close it until fall, I, you know, if we into the fall, but if. We're able to track when we get survey results, so we keep seeing three or four a day, that kind of thing, we'll just leave open and continue to add that information. But that's great, because if we don't, don't start seeing activity, you come back and we're gonna forget it, yeah.
Yeah, and do you resend a reminder, say, hey, you know?
Yeah, through the, the, we do that through the website, well, we could easily do it through email, especially like, I'll wait to contact the school districts till they're in school. You know, no sense in doing it until the August, but.
Yeah, and and the frustrations from transportation don't always happen all at, I mean, at the same time. Our transportation, I think, is my opinion, it's going to be different in the fall, it's going to be different. When you get the semis, you work the farmers' circle and um the school buses circle and that's when you're, that's when the people are gonna say. Gosh, I'm sure pissed off with this intersection or whatever, this is really hard to get from here to there because they have all these trucks, I mean, you're not gonna think about it now, so.
Except for people like me.
Except for you and the dirt, yes.
I'll tell you, our highways are really quiet though right now, that's what matters.
Well, for sure, we could open through September, let's say, and then we'll revisit it after September.
Yeah, see what we do.
And we would get that beginning of school fun time, that transition period, capture all that.
Well, you know, the combination with the schools, you know, I started one of summer transport, I started whole set cargo, cargo all there and it's, it could be a real. Fun time.
I have, it's a, my email, two mail. Super, I'm gonna say, okay.
This is our draft website and this hasn't all been updated yet, but this will be the homepage.
So why does that say twenty four? So then Derek, this is, this is a great, great discussion point, so usually comp plans are a twenty year plan. We imagine that this will be approved in twenty twenty three, so it would be in the twenty forty three comp plan. If you want to just talk, what's your gonna, your comp plan and your corridor update, you want a couple weeks?
Twenty twenty two to twenty forty three, something like that.
Whatever, what are your guys' thoughts? You have, I normally have a bid.
This is my problem, this is, this is where I'm at, and maybe it's just my problem is the fact that updating our comprehensive plan. Um I'm assuming is a separate bid process. But I mean, when we, when we put that out, we put that out as a transportation, sorry, transportation plan, we do it as a whole.
Well, for a general, we have to, have to step, look at all those other ones.
Yes, yes, and when we look at our current comprehensive plan, um you know, we just kind of change what that is. And and I understand that as initiatives change, we may need to do that, um I just want to make sure that we're not telling the supervisor, say. We spent this, 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 especially after how long the last situation was close, but because this is the same conversation that we had with the courts. We have phase one, phase two, phase three, we have a three part plan, we were gonna do that, but I think we clicked the one.
There's no one's.
Yeah, and so I, you know, I feel like it's just this big jumble of mess. And I, I guess I don't want to burn out the public, I don't want to burn out my supervisors, I want to make sure we're.
So, you know, the the last cap I was on two thousand seven. Well, Chris is a professional, he's covered many cap plans, so serious firms and research that I've done is for county every twenty years. You want to do, you know, all of it, and between your twenty amendments, I heard him requesting issue, major issue that's come up. And you, and you guys want to be good for us to census, you know, get some, they're taking census stuff in there. So, am I wrong, Chris, am I right?
No, you're, you're on, you're on the right course.
And then in comparison to other counties in Iowa, I'm just don't know what I've read and heard of in Iowa.
Yeah.
And uh in Florida, we're doing it about every ten years, I mean, because of the growth and that's more growth or, I tend to say there's. There's always activity, but there's a lot of stuff and, you know. And changing the words, it's just a continuous growth that's going on there, so we should take a step back and, you know, if this issue's come up, we want to make sure. Doing it as needed, like we did one for solar, to address solar generation stations in there recently. You have new technology or new issues that come up, we need to be across.
And we'll have that chapter or part of a chapter in the plan about that, so it'll be kind of a description or summary of how events can go. And it'll describe the intention of the plan.
I guess. I. Let me. Let me try and rephrase what I'm hearing and hopefully which is. The transportation corridor is the main update to the comprehensive plan. And it's more, it's viewed more as. An enhancement or an amendment to the comprehensive plan, but at the same time, we are gonna look at uh. Updating some pieces of the comprehensive plan and getting it into. A format, there's a lot of stuff that we'll reuse where it is the public input that we get to obviously. Create this transportation corridor plan that will be a part of that, that new comp plan, that updated comp plan document.
Some of those land use.
Yep.
And then maybe what may come out with a few goals, objectives, policies. And I mean, that's, that may be, I don't know, I mean, some national commitments.
I, I would say in our, I think our thought was, we are going to use what we can from your existing comprehensive plan. We're gonna change the things you don't like, um what was that, the, I was listening to one of the P and Z meetings about the. The like growth area things, that's so, the clump, yeah, the clump thing, like I've never used the clump thing, I I understand, I get it, I've seen it in stuff. I talk with the pioneer that puts those things together all the time, I know why he does it, I don't do it because they don't make sense to me. But that's one piece that we want to update, so I I want to do, I don't want to do this like full update, like all this plan's useless, but we definitely have to update like the existing conditions. That's that county profile, we will use as many of the goals and objectives from the old plan that are still relevant, run those through. Run those through this kind of to you guys, through the public engagement piece. And put those into the basic, what we proposed is we put those kind of all into one chapter. So you're not looking through a chapter on this, a chapter on that, a chapter on this. It is a goals and strategies chapter. Then we have a future land use chapter that's an update from, gets rid of that, the the clump stuff and just does. A regular old future land use map that you can update and make decisions on based on land use goals. We have a transportation corridor plan section that is all the, basically would be a standalone chapter, but it's part of the comp plan. And we'll coincide with that new future label system. So if you look at those two, like that transportation corridor and a new comprehensive land use map. You're gonna be like, oh, these are very similar because they are, they will be the same, like that new future land use in the along the corridors, wherever we decide that distance. Is from those corridor areas and when we get back from folks, is gonna be different than your existing future language map because it will show that you are. I mean, where I'm where I'm thinking they're going is it will show, we are ready and willing to. Review applications for certain types of commercial and ag industrial development along these corridors if they make sense. If they meet these kind of criteria, if they can meet this zoning ordinance. That we're gonna write for those specific cases to, whether it's an overlay or another district or whatever it is, like all of that kind of goes in, but it's gonna look, it will be a. It will be, it will look like a new plan when a lot of the great elements only hold one plus that transportation piece. Then we will into those zoning ordinance updates. That's the process, at least as you know, as we saw it in the RP and that we proposed and we've been running it at this point is. We are gonna address a comprehensive plan update. It will include this transportation, it will include a new focus. On transportation corridors and how important those are to rural growth because. I can put all the housing that I want in the middle of nowhere out in the northeast corner and it's not gonna happen, but. You will see development along the corridors as you have some pressure for development next. So that's my thought at this point. Now, if we need, I what I would love to do is come up with something we can call it that. Gets to the heart of. What what we want, the message we want people to to think. So if we call it transportation corridor plan and comprehensive plan update, I'm very in line with that. If we call it, uh, if we just call it comprehensive plan update and we. Focus on, we are updating this plan to address the desire for increased development along our major corridors, we know that well.
I just don't wanna miss out on any public comment when we're talking about transportation corridors. And that's what the supervisors would ask us to do.
True.
And that's what the bid letting process was for.
True.
And that's what we were budgeted for. I don't want to miss out when, you know, a comprehensive plan update. When we put the comprehensive plan together, there was little to no input from the public, I felt. If you look at the meetings that happened back in two thousand seven, that just really wasn't a lot of input. I was hoping to get a lot more input to really bang it out there and say, hey, we're gonna do a comp plan, we're updating this. And I actually was so, I mean, I in the back here would see what was we hired them to do that, that supposed to replace plan, the comprehensive plan midterm. Update project and. Part part of our problem was at that time, our maps were not good. We really didn't have an issue with a lot of the zoning ordinance or things like that. It was our maps, our maps have not been updated since. A previous two zoning, three zoning.
The the zoning, the zoning maps.
Yes, the zoning maps itself.
Okay.
So that's what we're to do. And so that's why we kind of called it a midterm. And we talked about a lot of the things that were in our comprehensive plan that needed to be updated. Um, we spent a lot of time talking about the Chicago history. Which was almost non-existent um, in our in our company. Um, and it didn't include a lot of the more current things.
Okay.
And I guess those are the things that were, if if what we're doing here is a transportation corridor plan, fine. I just wanna make sure that we don't miss out on this other stuff, uh, to make sure that we, you know, frankly, the bidding process for that type of project. And then the supervisors are not saying, hey, you're spending all this money and we don't have a saleable product here. We don't have a good looking comprehensive plan. In the end, that's what I want to have, this good looking comprehensive plan that they can look at online and know, yeah, the rest of your kind of stuff. And and I just, I feel like it's just getting so muddied up.
Well, and I don't want it to be muddied up because if I feel like I'm on the same page as you. I I went into this. That this is a comprehensive plan update with a transportation corridor plan focused as to why it's being done.
And that's what my understanding was, that's what the supervisors are asking. Please, please do a corridor transportation corridor study.
And there'll be some new maps that come up. I think there'll be existing maps too. There, I mean, there won't be the zoning map, I know because the zoning maps exist with the zoning limits. And so, you know, it may have an updated land use map, but it'll be difficult to stand there. And well, the other maps that they need to be updated, that, you know, there's something there that uh, related to transportation corridor plan. Well, I did that as well. If not, we use, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I mean.
Yeah.
So I mean, so if. So I think. What I'm hearing at least, if we bring it back to this entry on the website, right? It's definitely an update. It's not, it's not a, we're all, it's not a new client, so we need to work it and update it to the title. But I would also, I think I wanna find, I wanna find a way to work in the transportation corridor piece as well right at the top so that. So that we have, so that we have that connection, especially the supervisor we look at in the article. Oh, transmission order plan is right there. So we modify that title, I think, you know, what's kind of a comprehensive plan update and. Transportation corridor. Or I think when we put it in our proposal, I think I put it in as like plus transportation corridor plan. That we were doing this comprehensive plan update plus a transportation corridor.
Yeah, I'm here with that and I actually buy that, date comma, um, because that's, you know, that's how it reads to me. And like I said, I guess I just don't want to, I don't know, does that make sense to anybody else that, I guess I don't want to. Be missing out on, you know, the questions that we're looking at, asking at the surveys. Um, when we, when we really wanna change the things on the comp plan, I I think there is a completely different bunch of questions to be asked. I I think, I think when we make changes to the comp plan, updating the comp plan, I think. The old comp plan, I think there were a lot of missed opportunities. I think a lot of the questions, the way that they were asked in the old comp plan, I I didn't agree with, I was here with it back. Um, but now that the focus is on more inspirational, lots of more of these things, I think there are better ways to ask those questions. And I think to me, you know, we do the transportation corridor and we we show people that, look, your your opinions matter. What you have to say matters. So then when we do the comp plan, we say, look, folks, we need your your opinions on these things now. What kind of, I was going back to a lot of my stuff, you remember uh, the riverfront? Changes to the riverfront, all that that was going on? I found a whole pack on that. I've not been thinking about that since I thought you were, I think, I never heard, and that was before I came on like that. Riverfront and mainly with the the conservation here, the city port dodge and the water barrier and all that. And that's why, that's why I don't want that. I don't want those types of trips forgotten out.
Geez. So where 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 the scope is now, it's definitely both, plus the zoning ordinance. Is what we're on the move to do. I wanna make the best use of the process that we scoped, which includes getting an input on both. My question is, do you wanna do, should we start looking at separating? The easy thing to do within the scope of what we have committed to, um, is do we do two surveys? Do we first do a transportation corridor survey and then follow up later with a comp plan survey that asks more of those comp plan questions? Do we do this community meeting? Do we have a portion where we talk specifically about transportation corridor planning? And then pivot and talk about comp plan or are we okay bundling this engagement process together? Right now, we haven't bundled.
No, I'm fine with what she had right now. I mean, I've always thought finally both.
Rest of that's what's gonna change the land use. The rest of it probably is.
Land use, the zoning use. Actually about the zoning order.
Yeah.
Um, overlay or zoning district, the specific requirements and guidelines.
That that helps implement the transportation corridor plan, which is backed up by the future land use plan. Yeah.
Okay. When when we talk about the two different ones, and again, this is just my opinion. I think, in my opinion, that supervisors are looking at us to say, look at these major corridors. What changes can we make to the areas around one sixty-nine, four twenty, um, P fifty-nine? What changes do we need to make to help growth? That has nothing to do with where do we need more housing, where do we need more recreation? And those are the kinds of things that I see as things that we need to update as part of our comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
And years ago, that was the big issue. And we said that our our ordinances necessarily weren't that, our maps were not good. That's when we started the process of updating maps. There were, like I said, I'm not gonna disparage. Past zoning administrators, but we went through quite a few and some of those things got missed. Our maps finally got updated. And I felt like part of the comprehensive plan update would be for us to look at that and look at the areas that we need to make a change. From these, um, you know, A one, A twos, try to get into housing. Those are the kinds of things that I don't see in our comp plan. But it was my understanding that supervisors are now just saying, hey, what do we need to do on those major corridors? To to make them more attractive. So I guess that's why I focus more on to that.
Yeah.
And that's, that's where I was at too.
Making sure we're prepared and those happen in the future.
Yeah.
We have a plan in place that, you know, somebody who had a hot pot as well along along these corridors, that's good, and so pleasing and just, you know.
And and if you do that corridor planning, which is important, it's important for the business to to bring business in and like. Eric says, you know, with the explosion of growth to the east side of Port Dodge and everything, we 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 wanna make sure we've got that in mind. And then in my mind, after you figure out the transportation corridors and what's going on there, then you start looking at traffic. Start looking at some of these areas that we we all know are zones, you know, A one that maybe shouldn't be. Um, and then try to try to carve out some places for some housing divisions and some, you know, some of the small states.
Yeah, I think we keep a wide open mind on that, on corridor and all textures.
Yeah.
The housing.
Yeah.
So, you know.
And and you know.
There might be some areas that are attractive and pushing closer to the river or whatever. Or, you know, larger ones, some of the visions or stuff like that, or they have a quick access out.
Sure, sure. Yeah, and and that's, I guess that to me is already, yeah, transportation corridors, get that figured out and then we, you know, kind of move out to those.
Yeah, because like how we discussed in our last meeting, you know, like most of us like, how do we come to town? What what route do we take? It was funny how a lot of us kind of discussed the same thing. How we basically miss coming right into that part of town, we go out about. Right, into our town. Which would then lead into the land use, let's say, address the traffic situation first.
I guess, yeah, I guess I just. I'm I'm unclear, when you guys are talking about this plan, I I'm just wanting to know. Cause I was, but I'm still not sure what's set on this, you know, are we spending that that bidding process was for a transportation corridor study? Uh, could we comment that? So that's gonna be one more tough fact. And that's gonna have to be a progressive question.
Yeah, that'll go, that'll go six, seven years ago.
And I expect a full update in twenty thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that falls in line with a lot of times, there's one every twenty years. Sometimes I have.
I would say, yeah, if they're not high growth, high pressure, okay, they're gonna fail. Yeah.
Well, I think, I think that answers to the questions on the transportation, I think that will tell us a lot. And I think that'll give us information that we need to make changes to the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
You know, like Bart said, you know, if people are coming into town this way, I come into town for this reason, or, you know, or there's. You know, there's a gas station there. Now I come into town that way because I'm stopping to get fuel. Um, does that make it easier if you are working at Prestige? You know, so we need to have some passing out there. You know, that that kind of step forward. And I guess it just comes back to the supervisor shop. That's that's my big, I think, is that on the supervisor.
Yeah.
Okay. Under budgeted plan, that's what I'm.
Good question. So maybe we call this the transportation corridor update to the comprehensive plan.
I mean, I think.
And. I I just think, you know, like I said, the guy brought us through the points at the last meeting I thought. Because when it comes to comprehensive plan updates, these people that are commuting in and out. Aren't going to be as invested in some of the other comprehensive plan updates that we made tonight. As as people who come in from ranch, because they're gonna be invested in their own community and what they wanna see there. And so I think to me, that's why that's kind of a separate bunch of questions and a separate bunch of interviews and information. That makes any sense. People, people that are commuting out in Humboldt aren't, you know, I mean, sure, they're gonna, you know, have opinions about recreation and stuff. But they're also gonna want recreation in Humboldt County. Yeah, because that's what they want back home. Absolutely.
Well.
I saw, I saw that line and I, yeah.
We, yeah, we can update that. The text under there, we updated a little bit too, because, you know, we had updated comprehensive plan, which includes transportation corridor plan, we'll purpose that a little bit. So that it's very focused on, this is the transportation corridor update to comprehensive plan. Stick to that as the message. Now, that will impact future land use and some of the other maps in there that we'll update and that type of thing, so. Scope-wise, we're we're good. We just have to look at the message a little bit and I appreciate you. Getting back in the. Cause I, I was, I was, I was big tenting. I was, I was, I was, you know, it wasn't that I what didn't, I, um. Sarah, I definitely know that transportation corridor is a big piece of this. I think we were, we were just, we were a little bit, we were a little more. On the all the big tent rather than, hey, that's that's where they focused in on that, I believe, update this and. Do the major, and you guys will do the major overall comprehensive plan again, seven years, eight years, whatever, this is. Amendment to it, basically. That will impact pieces of it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And then zoning ordinance, that bothers, the zoning, whatever, whatever we come up with as part of this transportation corridor plan. We need to have zoning ordinance that allows you to.
And if we could come back with this, you know, with major changes, what people wanna see, then, yeah, we need to look at some of those ordinances and say, okay, how do we need to tweak these ordinances to make them more current? To make them more attractive to somebody wanting to come in and put a business in. Yeah, that's, you know, like, make those kinds of changes.
Cool. Well, I'm on the same page.
Anywhere, most are, yeah, yeah.
This is a great time to film this because we haven't experienced much growth on the average, on the average on four. So I want to say to Matt, but we wanna get ahead of him to make sure that he knows some controls in place to, this is the problem that generations are gonna have to deal with. You know, how passionate are these corridors? They look, you know, the first impression they're gonna get. Outside of, you know, they're not gonna get off. If the aesthetics, these buildings, and that, you know, have some type of control, it's, it's really up to the staff.
It's interesting that you mentioned Fairmont because to me, Fairmont is supposed to be a popular place. I I mean, it just has a lot. That's it?
They're definitely attempting to.
I mean, hopefully, I don't like it, it makes a change, but that's not, I've been a place that I would stop. It'd be going back a little bit up to go.
Yeah, there isn't a lot. There, there, there's, there's not like, oh my God, I should go off here.
Yeah, you got the, the one exit, then right up right there. You got just that little bit right there on the exit ramp, one ninety.
And then the rest is kinda hidden.
Yeah.
That will, I mean. I mean, I, Fort Dodge has some of that too.
I was gonna say, we we got much of that in one sixty-nine, twenty.
Like, I know it well, because I drive all the time, but I, but if you were just coming in on twenty, you'd be like, okay, you know, like.
Link it's on.
I see some industrial activity, you know, smokestacks, that kind of thing. Obviously, there's more traffic than what's up there, so.
Yeah, if you don't know what's up there, you're not gonna go off there.
Yep.
Yeah. And and same thing, you know, when it's sitting on that one sixty-nine or coming in on seven, um, now what's there? There's still not a lot left to see.
There's no traffic, that's why I.
Cause I don't wanna stop. There's just a lot of that, honestly, but I guess in the signage and, you know, something I can work on too, to make sure that's indexed appropriately, just. Like the stops project, index this signage accordingly and make sure, so let's place that on the gaudy or anything, it's gonna be more traffic.
Got a lot of, a lot of interest and a lot of talk going on for, ooh, when is that gonna be? Cause it's got a lot of interest in people, dragged by, so.
Okay.
Which you can set. So you're pressing this one.
In a little, yeah.
So we're gonna skip the next few slides. Not really, okay. This is actually really, so what was your, your plan? Go to the next slide, Sarah. Um, obviously, we, you know, we were looking to update the document. Um, and so these, you know, these are some ideas about what this new revision of the plan would look like. Um, obviously, again, we're gonna focus on that transportation piece, but I I wanna know, do you want us to reuse and just add an appendix to that plan that's shown there? Or do you want a document that has that same information in it for the most part that's been updated because of the transportation border plan?
I I don't know how well, where it'd be put together for a transportation corridor update, I don't know how well it's gonna mesh with our cards.
Okay.
That's, that's my concern, because it's gonna, to me, it's gonna look like, I've never been impressed with ours. Come right off the web, say that, never been impressed with it. Um, and I'm hoping that whatever we come up with now is gonna be something impressive. And I just don't know how that's gonna mesh together.
What we envision going up with will have much less text, a lot more graphics, more to the point stuff, less whole graph, I guess, but.
You know, we're gonna say three lines.
Yeah, and it's, it, it's important information, it's just no one is gonna read it.
Yeah.
But, you know, and so we like to use maps, we like to use graphics, we like to use infographics. I would love to take a lot of this information, I would, there are many, many cases of that plan that we're, don't want to overhaul, but there's no reason for us to. We can take the text, use some of it, find another way to say it, put it into a format that's a little easier to read. As I said, our, we would have your transportation corridor as a whole separate chapter in in itself. So in a comp plan that we would do for a normal county, a lot of times you would have a transportation section of the plan, right? And so you're talking about roads and, you know, maybe some projects and that kind of thing. That would be about the limit of that thirty thousand foot view of transportation. That's probably, if I remember right, if we looked through that plan once in there, you know, like existing roads, planned projects, nothing, nothing, nothing other than sort of general information and then some goals about, like, hey, we wanna not have a road ballpark, and here's how we're gonna do that. So we'll pull that out and and basically make it, hey, here's this transportation corridor plan. It's very focused on economic development, very focused on growth, and very focused on, uh, policy changes that need to be made and that, you know, how it interacts with the land use map. The rest of this, we would basically put into, here is the goals and, uh, some of the objectives updated from the two thousand and seven plan, and, but it would be the new format. That would be more readable with less of the junk. All that, I don't choose each other, because it's like, it's like. All the background information that is a shocking time, like when we pull it from the census, or when we pull it from, you know, uh, economic development charter about jobs or commuting area, that's not. It is, it is, whenever that data was taken, whether that's, you know, maybe it was taken yesterday, that'd be awesome, but most likely it was two thousand and twenty. So now that's two years old. We put that in a whole separate thing called the county profile, that's what we were talking about, where if you wanna update that and take a look at it in two years with new data, do it, you know, but it doesn't, it's a separate piece and a separate appendix of the plan that is really good background information, but it doesn't need to muddle just your simple, here's our goals for housing. Here's our goals for, the transportation goals will be part of that next piece, but here's our goal for intergovernmental collaboration and that kind of thing. Just kind of streamline all that. The other thing we do is we will do a whole chapter on public engagement. So this process, we'll probably bring in some of the stuff from two thousand and seven, since we're gonna still, the the documentation of what was done in two thousand and seven for public engagement. Put that in there as, you know, a lot of this content is still from the two thousand and seven plan, here's the process that we went through. During this transportation corridor update, here's what we did. Community, you know, the surveys, the community input meetings, the meetings with the planning commission, um, all that kind of stuff will be in one chapter as well. Again, the reason we do that is so somebody can pick that chapter up, and if they were like, well, where are public engagement at? It's it's literally right there in a chapter, where the pictures, uh, we do a little introduction, which is the history, the process, all that kind of stuff as chapter one. And then the last chapter, um, after the land use, so either we did land use and then transportation orders, or transportation orders, then land use, the last chapter we have set up for the plan outline is the implementation chapter. And that is the, here's how you use a plan on an annual basis, here's how the plan should be used daily, and this action plan for implementation. Which will take the goals, objectives, put them into, basically, we we start the process, bring it into an Excel sheet. And then we'll come back to you guys and say, here's the goals from the previous plan, here's the new goals that we've updated, here's the objectives that are are still important, here's the ones we've added from what we've gotten from feedback. What action steps do you guys want us to put in for the next five years, ten years, whatever it is? Um, and then that last chapter has that basically, you would continue, Jeff, the supervisor, and some other departments will continue to look at that implementation metrics, at least on an annual basis. It'll be like, we checked out this, this, and this, we're gonna do this next year, we're gonna be budget for this two years from now, whatever it is. So that chapter will look tremendously different than your current plan. That's implementation chapter is not fantastic. And it'll be useful and something you can update annually that will extend the lifetime, to be honest. You know, because if you look at it annually, and you can say like, oh yeah, we did those three things, let's add three more things that would help with this objective, or run the next three steps. Or, yeah, we're gonna be budgeting that, so we should talk to the board supervisors, because that's two years away and we need to deal with it, so. Um, it'll look much better. And then we have the community profile, and then that's it, that's the plan.
I've added, I've been going through all my, my asset creation, I have a four comp plan. We apparently also put out, we were trying to look at it in twenty thirteen, and apparently it's in the budget or something. And but, and that's what I mean by saying, it's, you know, it just feels like a bigger piece, you know, I, I hope this with this transportation part is that we're gonna have something that companies are gonna be able to look at online and go, man, these guys have got it going on with their transportation. This is a place where I wanna put my business, because it's easy access, I can get in, my trucks can be fueled, what have you. That's kind of what I'm hoping to do.
And the other part of that is we wanted to look at it and say, oh, I could totally go through that rezoning process. Cause it wasn't easy, probably, was it? And it had already been in the future land use plan or in the corridor plan, you know? It's, it's, it is, but then, sorry. Just stepping. I guess what I'm saying is, you wanna look open for business, and part of that means eliminating the guesswork of, will the, the, the kind of the, the guesswork.
The problem, the problem, every problem.
Yeah.
Eliminate the guesswork and and do what the people in the area want to have, or what they want to see.
You have, you have.
We want some of the best campus to look at.
Yeah, you have a corridor plan that says this, you have a future land use plan that says, yep, we're open to industrial and business development along this corridor, makes use of whatever it is. Then you have an applicant come in and say, I wanna rezone from A one to C, whatever, at this intersection. It takes all of the part, now, then you can get to, okay, what are you gonna do at the site? As opposed to, I don't know if that's gonna work, it's not, it's not sold for that. Because you know that it's already in that comprehensive plan and in transportation corridor plan. Oh yeah, we have a plan for business growth in that area, let's go. Let's talk about, let's talk about, obviously, yes, as opposed to, I don't know if it's gonna work.
Yeah, yeah.
Eliminate that step in the process, you eliminate it for you guys, you eliminate it for the supervisors, you also eliminate it for the applicants. You take, you know, drastically reduce their due diligence period and their, kind of, their, that risk that they have in mind. I gotta go through a rezoning first, I don't know if it's gonna work out.
But you also like landlord stuff. Here's the possibilities, what, you know, as a landlord, all these corridors, or your thoughts, what would you like to see?
Right.
Um, what, where do you expect your land to be in twenty years? Get their ideas, so we, we can, so we don't have that landlord, oh, you know, and perhaps somebody wants to put a, a, something on my land.
Why do you keep talking about?
Yeah, why do people keep asking me, get their input and be sure that those corridors are.
Now, some of them may say, I'm gonna farm this forever, and I never want it to change. And we'll have to make a decision at that point in this process, whether we wanna go ahead and do all the future land use map. But then, it's within a quarter mile of this corridor, this intersection. We're gonna say that that might develop someday, and we're gonna call it this future land use. The great thing is, I don't think Webster County's gonna be going out and buying that property from anyone and selling it to a developer. It's gonna mean that property owner has to choose to do something with their property, whether they do it themselves or they sell it before anything happens. So that always is the, I, I will preference, like, you're gonna hear through this process, you're gonna hear some people will be like, great, I would love that opportunity to develop someday. You're gonna have some that'll be like, I don't know, developed last year or ten years ago, and you never, I wasn't allowed to, and blah, blah, blah. Then you're gonna hear that the other ones are like, I'm never gonna do anything with it, my family's gonna farm it, we farm it for hundreds of years, we're gonna farm it for a hundred years more. The thing you have to remember is, um, consensus, as Jeff said, we gotta, we gotta build that plan to the wall like this. And in the end, the property owner is still in charge. They, there will not be an intensification of use on their property until they choose to intensify the use of their property.
But this will, this is part of the process, and that's why, to me, try to keep the two processes separate. It gives that landlord the opportunity to feed part of the process, which I don't feel landlords were part of that process back to that.
Probably.
I mean, it just wasn't happening.
And probably wasn't.
They haven't been a part of a lot of the process.
Yeah.
You know, it's only part of the material extraction, out of my understanding.
Yeah.
And I love.
There, and the, there probably wasn't a lot of change to the rural areas, and I said rural areas, which would be included ones along the corridor from the two seven, uh, two thousand and seven plan in the process, it was, here's your cities, here's the rural area. Maybe some development around these areas, the rest is active, right, or maybe rural residential kind of thing. Now you're proposing a, you, I, the, the frame, the way I would frame it as part of that, that conversation is, the county is extending an opportunity to, for property owners that we know, we see growth pressures along these corridors. We're extending an opportunity, potentially use your property in a different way, or if you want to. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah.
See what they say.
Have a conversation, make them a part of this process, so it's not out of the blue. Um, and and that's why, again, why, to me, I think that's a whole different animal than our whole comp plan update.
Yep. And which is why the overlays on might be, again, better, because you're just doing an overlay for the districts, not a, not a, not a zoning change. And I would never, I wouldn't say, the zoning ordinance, the new, a new, if we do a new zoning law after this, it will still be up to the individual applicant's accord and request rezoning. We're gonna make a future land use map that, and a zoning ordinance is allowed for that property owner to come in and request that? But it's not gonna rezone their property, the county will not rezone their property. They will choose to come in and do that, and they'll have this as a tool, is the way we wanna set it up.
Good question.
Yeah.
Okay. So, sorry, Sarah. What do you like to talk about?
You know, what else? Really next to that. No, I don't think I have anything else, let's see what's up, oh, yeah, we do, we have more. Um, scheduling stakeholder interviews and input waiting, and then our such for me.
Okay. So stakeholder interviews, as I said, what we really like to do with those is, um, set up an email, what I've, what we've done past is I set up an email, get approved, and send it to you guys, send it out, send Jeff, send it out to anybody, we'll send it to the supervisors, tell them, please sign up for a time, um, and send this on to anyone else you'd like us to talk to. And then they get an email, and again, we just put it as an accountably, we'll be able to see that when we do the proof. And I usually just block out, so it, it works really well. It, um, links with my, our, my account for work, so by having a meeting or somebody sets up a meeting, it shows that time is not available. All the other times from eight to five, I usually put some evenings in there as well, just because people wanna talk after work, that kind of thing. Um, it just shows up as thirty minute time slots that they can sign up. Um, the one I'm, there's one I'm working on right now, I worked it out for all of July and August, basically, are. And so people sign up, you know, I'll get a couple of interviews here, a couple of interviews there, and I think, but basically, they just sign up for remaining, there's pretty much free, and then if I, you know, if they set that up, somebody else can't sign up for that same time, or my wife puts something on my calendar where I have to, I got a kid, so I have to change it to free.
Can you email us the final stakeholder?
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, so I mean, give me the list.
My best, I don't, to get their email.
That's what I was just gonna ask you, is that, the stakeholder list, is that gonna be the?
I would say. Yep. Supervisors coming staff.
Okay.
Um.
My name is one of the members.
And it's Wiki Wheels, any, anyone that has, that you know is interested along those corridors, and I would say, if you know anyone who owns property along those corridors.
So we're not having a meeting, that's one, we don't, we have on, just now.
Right.
Do you post it yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll, I'll send out a letter and tell them to call, so what we, what we do in that case, we'll send out a letter and, um,
Okay.
Invite them to call, we have a one eight hundred number, and they will schedule a meeting for that question. So Janet in our office is our administrative assistant, and she takes calls all the time, she's set up a meeting, so she just bookmarks that calendar. And if they call, she says, okay, what time will work for you, and finds, you know, finds the time, and then signs them off.
Yeah, members of the world of minds, we're wanting to talk to you guys.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to know, is if we were gonna be a platform list of who, who is gonna be included in the stakeholder, I mean, for.
The brightest people in the towns.
There's somebody that you guys also.
Yep, yep.
City four manage, uh, planners, uh, wanna engage with them.
Yeah.
Maybe even, I would, I would even go as far as city council members. I'm just, I don't know, I mean, I don't work with all the brightest. I don't see this group being a lot of groups, but there's key people, the city makers, council makers that are out there. I don't, I don't understand groups, so.
I would, I would say if you, the ones that are focused on growth would be the idea of us to talk with. And then the property owners, because as you said, like, if we're gonna be doing an overlay zone and that kind of thing, and coming up with a future land use, I wanna get them, whether it's a meeting, whether it's a survey, whether it's bending my ear a bit, I wanna get the opportunity to talk.
So we talked to the city planner, city four dodge planner, I would think that they would transfer information to council members, I don't know why they would have to call. The mayor, maybe, I mean, maybe.
Maybe some there.
Yeah. Would like some economic development commissions? Can you do it like as a group where it goes in on?
Is there one for the, that represents the county best, like the non, unincorporated areas of the county best?
There's, Garry's Garry Development Commission, and we make monthly.
How, yeah, how excited were Garry's economic development commission to be, that there was, the county, there was growth in the unincorporated areas around that, that wasn't in the city?
Uh, yeah, we're turned well.